Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Tuesday, March 23rd, 9 o'clock. First order is adoption of our minutes from March the 9th. By Mennel and Ketchba. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warren Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Oh, yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. And disclose your pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Counselor Martin?
Uh, yes, in the closed session, I have the one, the item concerning White Station. I declare a conflict for that.
Thank you, so noted. No other ones? Okay. And we have a presentation this morning from the St. Thomas Elgin Public Arts Center, their 2020 annual report. Laura, welcome. Whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to report on the activities of the Public Arts Center for 2020. Um, I'd like to also thank Brian Michele and Mike Baker and the Archives. I would like to highlight some of the activities in the report, but you can look at the report for more details. We believe that art is an essential part of public life and we share it with passion and purpose. Although the past year presented many challenges for us, the generosity, kindness, and support received from members, donors, sponsors, artists, neighbors demonstrated not only the importance we place on art and creativity, but helped us uplift us during this difficult time. In 2020, we did not measure our successes based on numbers, but we have included them in the stats, I think on page three. We started the year with a bang with great programs, exhibitions, events, and the conclusion of our 50th anniversary exhibition. It started with current contemporary selections from the permanent collection and completed with the anniversary year with Great Beginnings Elementary artwork from elementary students. Once the restrictions were put in place, the Art Center temporarily closed and the Great Beginning Secondary Student Artwork Exhibition went online. We worked with the educators and promoted the student artwork through our social media platform with great success. Throughout the first lockdown, um, like everyone else, we went online. Our program director developed a series of art education videos, hands-on art activities, virtual exhibition videos, and art packages that linked the online videos to the activities. And you can find these great videos and activities on our website under the Access to Art tab. Once we reopened again, the exhibitions focused on our mission and our permanent collection. These exhibitions linked to our online content and other resources like the Elgin County Archives. The self-guided tours utilized QR codes, extended labels, and conversation starters. Our virtual exhibitions included theme and retrospective-based shows such as Tell Me Something. I think that is some highlights from some of the exhibitions that took place once we opened again. Tell Me Something was text-based art from our collection, Stanley Lewis, A Survey of Woodblock Prints from our collection, Isolation as Inspiration, Selections from the Collection, and A Brief History of Merle Ting Tingly Editorial Cartoons from the Collection, which is on view right now in the Art Center till April 10th. If you, um, needed a day trip, it would be a great exhibition to take in. Our report includes our onsite programs for children's, teens, adults, and seniors for the three months leading up to the lockdown in 2020. And they range from seminars to live music events, watercolor classes, March break classes, and things like that. Um, and all of them were waiting lists and very, very successful. Uh, we are also grateful for our small but mighty YouTube crew ranging from ages eight to 21, who spent hours up in the studio sharing their talents, creativity, to star in our educational content that we're able to share on YouTube. Our gift shop services were expanded to accommodate online gift shop store on our website, and we thought it would be important to include a library of the artist's bios as well. We have continued our partnerships with the Thames Valley District School Board and the London District Catholic School Board and participated in new partnerships and programs with Violence Against Women Services Elgin and, you know, the cold. Volunteers were also a key door of success this year. Thirty-nine volunteers gave 362 hours to the Art Center, which include, included, sorry, um, working in the studio, reception, installation, and general maintenance of the building. Acquisitions for 2020 saw an addition of, excuse me, 47 new artworks in the collections such as Clark McDougall, Moreso Norvo, or Norville, Moreso, sorry, and John Paul Ria Powell. Um, I would like to end by thanking the County of Elgin, our members, donors, sponsors, and our grantors for the successes we achieved in 2020. And I'd be happy to take any questions if you had any.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate the presentation. I'd open the floor if there's any questions for Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a comment to congratulate Laura and the staff and the volunteers and the board members. Um, I've mentioned before, this is a very well-run organization. I've been impressed from the beginning of my involvement, and it was no surprise that during the pandemic, they, um, being on the solid foundation, were able to just pause for a minute, but then just release all that creativity. They tried a number of things they had never tried before and produced new resources, new ways of sharing art. And so it was great to see very successful adjusted fundraising to an online auction, which I think was the most successful auction ever. So it worked very well. So really, really well done. You could tell that, um, uh, like I said, it was on the solid foundation and were able to adapt quickly. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for those, uh, high praise. Way to go. Further comments? I'd like to point out to Counselor Purcell and Jones and French, if I, if you have a question, speak up if I don't see you on the screen. So, um, not hearing any more, Laura, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to receive and file. Moved by Domin, Shiger, and Martin. Go ahead with the vote, please.
Deputy Warren Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. Have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
Motion to move into committee, the whole, please. Need a mover and seconder? Counselor Mennel. Counselor Ketchba. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warren Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Our first report is Director of Homes and Senior Services, Notice and Extension of Service Accountability Agreement. Michelle, I guess you're up.
Yes, thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. So before you is the report on the extending letters. Um, so it is a requirement that the Southwest Lynn enters into a service accountability agreement with each house service provider that it funds. And so the Corporation of the County of Elgin has two MSO agreements for the Adult Day Program at Wilbury Villa and Terrace Lodge, and then the three long-term care homes. On March 3rd, we received a notice to amend the date from March 31st, 2021 to March 31st, 2022. I do need to inform council that it's not included in this report, but on end-of-day Friday, March 19th, I received a communication from the Southwest Lynn issuing a transfer order notice. And this transfer orders notice is to transfer some of the Lynn functions to Ontario Health effective April, April 1st, 2021. Those functions that would be transferred relate to health system planning and to funding functions. None of the Lynn's direct patient care activities, so the long-term care placement services, are being transferred to Ontario Health. So, uh, we've been assured there'd be no impact to patient care. The Lynn would be operating under a new name entitled Home and Community Support Services. And so effective April 1, Ontario Health will assume all rights and obligations in respect of all service accountability agreements that have been entered into by the Southwest Lynn with healthcare service or health service providers. So aside from the assumption of these agreements by Ontario Health, all of the other terms and conditions will remain the same. We've been advised to please continue to perform and provide services as usual in accordance with the terms of the service accountability agreements. So that's new information for council. Uh, the recommendations before you are that the report be received and filed and that council authorize the warden and CAO to sign the notice of an extension of service accountability agreement extending letters. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the report, Michelle. Do we have any questions for Michelle? Fairly straightforward. Entertain a motion to receive and file.
Purcell.
Moved by Purcell, second by McPhail. Please call a question.
Deputy Warren Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Um, Michelle, you're still up. Housekeeping and laundry policy manual review and revision.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to council. So again, as per the Long Term Care Home Act, policy and procedures are to be reviewed annually. So the Homes Policy Manual for both housekeeping and laundry has been reviewed and revised by the three managers of support services for our homes in consultation with public health as required. Uh, the biggest changes of policies reflect the implementation of the microfiber cleaning system, which was completed in 2020. And so the two recommendations before you are that the report be received and filed and that council approve the policy manual review and revisions. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Michelle? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Mover and seconder, please. Mennel. And Jones. Let's call the vote.
Deputy Warren Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Report from our senior financial analyst, council and outside boards remuneration expenses. Lisa? Are you here? Go ahead if you are.
Oh, yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. Uh, each year, we are required to do a report on the remuneration mileage and expenses for council and outside boards, as well as a convention report. The warden and council remuneration and expenses for 2020 totaled $284,109.23. And the convention expenses for 2020 were $15,721.54, and details are provided for you. Uh, remuneration and expenses paid to persons on outside boards total $14,000. In total, the 2020 spend for, uh, remuneration expenses, conventions, and outside boards And this for 2020, uh, was a spend of $38,556.48 lower than in 2019 due to the implications of COVID impacting attendance on conventions and outside board meetings. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Lisa. Question for Counselor Martin, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm just curious under the conventions, because it lists me with registration or something for AMO, and I did not register for AMO. And if I was registered, I did not request it. I did, I, uh, said I wasn't going, you know, I wasn't going to take part in the virtual meeting. So I was just curious that that was there.
Okay, um, sorry, may I have the name again? I just.
Sally Martin. Sorry.
Counselor Martin.
I could, I've got my spreadsheet open. Let me just take a quick look and see if I can answer this for you. I have Roma. You know, there was a, there was a refund, but it didn't, uh, the refund didn't, uh, wasn't a full refund. There was an amount left of $204.02. So I can, uh, look at that and check with administration to see if what happened there. But that, there was a partial refund, not a full refund on, on the registration.
Thank you. I never asked to be registered at all, so that's why I'm curious.
Okay. Uh, sometimes, I, I don't know whether Julie might help me with this, but sometimes are they pre-registered, Julie?
No, well, we'll take that back. Counselor Martin, you can have a look at our records. I hesitate to comment right now without seeing what we, uh, what, what actually transpired.
Thank you.
Counselor Ketchba has a comment.
Yes, not a comment, but a question. In like vein, um, I had understood that, uh, the 2020 OGRA conference was funded by the municipality of Bayham, but, uh, you may want to check your records on that one.
Okay.
Okay, I will do that as well.
And we have a question from Counselor French. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, the same thing for me. It says that I, uh, was involved with the Roma Conference and I didn't sign up for it. And, um, so I don't know if there was a mistake there or whatever, but maybe you can check into that, too. Thank you.
Friendly.
Okay.
Okay. That's why we have this opportunity.
Yes.
For the questions? Okay. Motion to receive and file?
I suggest we defer.
Okay.
And reconsider at, uh, at the next meeting after we've had an opportunity to review and connect with our local municipal partners about some of the registrations. So we appreciate the feedback and apologize for any misinformation that may have been shared today.
Okay, everyone's fine with that? We don't need a motion to defer?
You should.
Should, okay. Moved by Ketchba, second by Shiger. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warren Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. We'll look forward to those explanations, corrections, if necessary. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Have a good day.
You, too. All right, up next is Director of Community and Cultural Services, Audio and Video Surveillance Policy Adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, thank you, um, and through you to county council. Um, this report recommends a revision to the county's video surveillance policy to incorporate contemporary features of these systems, such as the ability to also record audio and also to reiterate ongoing practice when it comes to protecting the privacy of residents, staff, and the general public relevant to applicable laws pertaining to access and privacy. Um, the full scope of changes are outlined in the report and highlighted in the proposed policy update. These updates have been reviewed by the county solicitor, and I'm happy to answer any questions that members of council might have.
Thank you, Brian. Does anyone have a question for Brian? Everyone's happy with it? Entertain motion to receive and file. Moved by Martin.
So you receive, file, and adopt.
Receive, file, and adopt. Moved by Martin, second by Mennel. Head with a question.
Deputy Warren Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Up next is Director of Engineering Services, Transportation Master Plan Study Award. The other, Brian, go ahead, Brian. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Uh, through you to county council. The county recently invited proposals from consultants to undertake a comprehensive transportation master plan intended to provide direction for the planning, coordination, and implementation of multi-municipal road and potential transit opportunities, as well as active transportation amenities and commuter, and commuter facilities. This update also includes a comprehensive update of the county cycling master plan. To support the cycling master plan update effort, staff plans to establish a cycling advisory committee comprised of staff and local cycling enthusiasts. The evaluation team selected IBI Group, having submitted the best qualified proposal. Staff recognizes that stakeholder consultation is critically important to this study, and notwithstanding COVID-19 limitations, IBI Group and consultation, in collaboration, rather, with staff, will implement a consultation process that is open and inclusive with digital platforms that can support a variety of online engagement activities. Their work plan also includes facilitating numerous municipal advisory and technical advisory committee meetings with both local and external municipalities, agencies, and stakeholder groups. Two rounds of public information centers will also be held to solicit feedback from the public. The recommendations are before you if you have to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have any questions for Brian? Very extensive report. Counselor Martin?
Yes, I, I very much appreciate it, Brian, and I think it's going to be an excellent thing. The one thing I, I have a little concern, I know, and that's with when county roads are, you know, you download them or, you know, transfer them to the local municipality or vice versa, when municipal roads move up to county roads. I hope, uh, there will be lots of consultation on there, and it won't be just automatic, because I know in central Elgin, we're looking at closing certain roads, um, which would affect county bridges as well. Um, so I, I just bringing that up as an important aspect. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Comment, Brian, or you're good?
Yeah, through Mr. Warden to Counselor Martin, absolutely. As mentioned, consultation is a critical part, and, uh, each of the member municipal partners will certainly be involved, uh, throughout this, uh, update.
Appreciate those comments. Further questions for Brian? Are we good? Mover and seconder, please. Moved by McPhail, second by Jones. Please call a question.
Deputy Warren Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next up is Director of Engineering Services, Administration Building and Elgin Manor Roof Replacement Project. Brian, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden, again, through you to council. Included as part of the approved 2021 capital budget, a tender was advertised for the final phase roof replacement, both here at the administration building and Elgin Manor. The results and recommendations are before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Brian? Not seeing any. Okay, mover and seconder. Mennel. French? Please call the vote.
Deputy Warren Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones. Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you for that. Director of Engineering Services, again, Cold-in-Place Asphalt Recycling Tender, um, Culvert Rehabilitations.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, again, through the county council. Also included as part of the 2021 budget, uh, the annual maintenance contracts associated with Cold-in-Place Asphalt Recycling and Culvert Rehabilitation Tenders were recently released. The results and recommendations are before you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah, just not really a question, Brian. It just something in the past that we used to receive was a weekly report during construction, just listing what projects were being, what roads were being constructed at what time, um, so that we had a heads-up if people asked, et cetera. And we don't do that anymore, and I really, I miss it very much. I appreciated it when we knew what bridge or what road or what section was being done when, um, I don't know how much work that was, but I would, I just would request that I would appreciate receiving that again.
I think that's a very important. I think that's a very important comment. Uh, I know that some of those roads are fairly close to me, and, uh, with the planning season coming on, and that seems to go on all summer long with spring and whatnot, so I'm sure the neighbors, the farmers would appreciate knowing when they need to detour so they can plan for it. So I think that'd be very helpful, Brian.
Yes, we'll certainly happily distribute that information.
That is appreciated. Further questions for Brian? Move in seconder, please. Martin. And Mennel. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warren Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Mc.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden. 9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Uh, next up is County Solicitor, Telecommunication Equipment Consent and Road User Agreement. Welcome, Steve. I believe you're muted, Steve. Not very often I get to correct you.
A lot of people wish I was muted more. Before council is a report seeking direction of, and approval for a road user agreement specific to telecommunications installations, as well as authorization for fees and charges associated with that agreement. The report is self-explanatory, but I, I have a couple of points I want to emphasize. The first is that in, that this type of agreement, industry-specific to telecommunications installation, is justified since there is a requirement under the telecommunications, telecommunications act for obtaining municipal consent. So there is an additional, uh, requirement under the legislation, so it takes it out so it takes it out of what I would say is the normal road user agreement. Secondly, the scheme that's being proposed is to cast the road user agreement as an overall umbrella, establishing the administrative procedures and requirements, while the various installations are then considered and approved within the permit process by engineering services. So this approach avoids frequent amendments to the road user agreement, as well as involvement of legal services. The primary benefits are administrative convenience and cost avoidance, particularly in the event of multiple installations by the same telecommunications provider. The proposed fees are consistent with the current road user agreement approach, are considered reasonable. The current fee for agreement preparation is unchanged. The permit fees for road occupancy are the same. What's now proposed is a specific annual contract administration fee of $100 per year and an installation fee calculated on a per kilometer charge, rather than an annual fee. I can indicate that the installation charge is $250 per kilometer. And if you compare that to the normal, or what is the minimum annual fee of $500, that's where I think the savings will come into play. If the fees are authorized today, they will be referred to legislative services for inclusion within the fees and charges bylaw for 2021. And since they'll be included in the fees and charges bylaw, they'll be subject to annual review, which is another benefit. So any questions? I'd be happy to try to answer.
Counselor Mennel.
Steve, just a question on the user fees, and are these consistent across the province, or who sets the fees?
They are subject to the, they're local, they're set locally. They're not set set across the, across the province.
Because the question is that in regard to a contract administration fee of $100, that just seems that would hardly cover staff time.
The, I guess I'm basing it upon our experience with the with the road user agreement for the oil and gas companies, and so that's where the, that's where the experience came in. We can certainly take another look at that. And again, it is subject to annual, annual review. The, we did consider, and we looked at agreements from particularly Middlesex, and we set the, a similar per kilometer charge. We didn't see any, that particular agreement didn't include any contract administration past the, the original or initial contract preparation fee. So that's something that I can review with Mr. Lima. There is a, the other point is that the permit per installation is $200 per, per installation. So establishing the installation is part of that permit process. So you may get an application that has multiple installation requests, and they will, and the charge will be $200 for each permit approval, and then it's just a $100 administration fee after that.
Okay, my concern is that I just want to make sure we're covering our own expenses and that we're not subsidizing someone else.
No, I think that, I think that given that there is a permit fee for instance installation, then the administration fee is just a, is simply an annual, annual review, and I believe that, that it is sufficient at this point.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Further questions? Counselor Jiguer.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just wondering, would you say this is aligned with what we heard at the connectivity committee in terms of ISP saying we, we want, we want to collaborate with you, it has to be reasonable, accessible? Would, do you think that would be received that way?
I would, I would hope so. The whole issue came up as a result of an inquiry from a telecommunications provider. We looked into it. Mr. Lima and I discussed it, and we thought that it was an improved approach and would, and would encourage and is in line with the council's approach to encouraging telecommunication installation. So it was prepared, it was considered, investigated, and prepared to that end.
Thank you.
The information that I've received back is that it, it is considered reasonable and fair. I think the, they wish that maybe some other road people, provincial, were, were as fair and as thorough and easy to get along with. So I think they were wishing we'd maybe help with number three highway and places like that, but that's another topic, another day. But I think they looked at it favorably. Further comments? Looking for a mover and second, or please? By Jiguer. Second by Purcell. Call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Next up is our official plan five-year review engagement strategy. Who's leading that?
Again, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. The purpose of this report was to present and seek council's approval for the five-year official plan engagement strategy, as endorsed by the Rural Initiatives and Planning Advisory Committee at its meeting on March the 9th. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Julie? Nancy was in last night to Central Algen give a report, so. See no questions, so mover and second, or please? Martin, Jiguer. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Joan Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones. Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Very good, thank you. Next up is council correspondence. We have none for consideration, and our consent agenda. We have an update from SWIFT for monthly project for January and February. And then the third one is Natural Resources Canada. Do we need to take them individually, or can do them all together? Would anyone like to comment on any of them? Okay. Move in second, or to receive and file?
One, two, three.
One, two, three. By Mennel, Ketchba. Go ahead with the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you for that. Other business. Statements, inquiries by members. Not seeing any. Better check my screen. Notice of motion. Matters of urgency. All right. We have a request for council's consent to add the following matter of urgency to the closed meeting agenda.
Sorry, Mr. Warden, we did have a matter of urgency. A matter of property, so 239, 2B, C, F, and K. We would need council's consent to allow the solicitor to present her report as a matter of closed session.
All right. So we need mover and second for that. Let's have a mover by Jones. Second by Jiguer. Let's call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones. Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. We're at closed meeting items, so we need a motion going to closed session. Moved by Mennel. Second by Martin. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Great, thank you. Entertained a motion to move into open session. Moved by Mennel, second by Ketchba. Please call the vote.
Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin left the meeting with notice. Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. We are in open session. I think we should take a short break, or, or do you want to carry on?
Just doing the bylaws.
Okay.
So we'll do the rise and report for each of the
Very good.
Most items.
Three Commissioner Weed Inspector.
We, with council's consent, we did reorder the items that were considered in closed session. So the first in-camera item was consideration of the community emergency management support for the municipality of Dunwich, and be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and second, or please? Ketchba, McPhail, please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried. Close session item number two was fire training, training officer organizational update, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and second, or please? Jones? And Mennel?
Deputy Warden, sorry, Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
For closed session item number three, which was an investigation update, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed. Sorry, correction, be it resolved that the, the report from staff be received.
Moved by Ketchba and French. Please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
For closed session item number four, Human Resources Department Structure Review and Recommendations, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Moved by Jiguer, second by Purcell. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin is not here. Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
It's zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next.
Close session item number five, which was service delivery review in-house engineering design business case, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Moved by McPhail, second by Jones. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next one.
Property acquisition, closed session item number seven, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Moved by Deputy Warden Mennel, second by Jiguer. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. One more?
Two.
Two more.
Closed session item number seven, economic development review, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Moved by Jiguer, second by Purcell. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Last one.
Go ahead.
Close session item number eight, which is white station operations center property divestment, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
And that is moved by Deputy Warden Mennel, second by Jones. Thank you. Please call the vote.
Yes.
Mennel. Trying to speak this up more than me. Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. And to motion to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole. And mover and sucker, Deputy Warden Mennel, second by McPhail. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.